Do people online here in the room?
No.
Okay, not just me then.
Oh yeah, sorry folks, I think we were muted and you couldn't hear us. Apologies, we had the microphones issues and then we were muted, but we'll try again. So again, we will restart the Board of Trustees meeting, the regular meeting for on Tuesday, January 21st, 2025, at 7:02. Macy?
Mayor Billy?
I'm here.
Mayor Protem Sterling?
Here.
Great.
Trustee Corvalon?
Here.
Trustee Larson?
Here.
Trustee Maris?
Here.
Trustee Miller?
Here.
And trustee Ty?
Here.
Thank you all.
Thanks Macy. With that, we have going to our consent agenda, we have six items. Warrants, meeting minutes, and approval of Boulder County Sheriff's Budget Amendment for Dispatch Services and a Correspondent Grant Program Application. If you have any clarifying questions, now is the time. Probably of John. Any motions?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Got a motion and second Macy?
Mayor Protem Sterling?
Yes.
Trustee Larson?
Yes.
Trustee Maris?
Yes.
Mayor Billy?
Yes.
Trustee Ty?
Yes.
Trustee Corvalon?
Yes.
And trustee Miller?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks everyone, with that, we'll go right into staff reports. Got staff reports from all the department heads and any questions or comments for the staff? I have one, John, do you have any more specifics around the cross mine operated by Grand Island Resources and their process with the, with applying to the state to be a DMO?
Yes, sir, they just went through a process that gave them a little bit of time to, for the state to understand if their application is completed. I believe the date for that is February 24th, it's around the 20th in that range. We'll be notified when that happens. There will be a public notification period that has got to be in the local paper and things like that when that process begins. There are also several criteria that go into that decision-making process and that's something that we can talk about further, just to be thinking about what the decision qualifications would be.
Thanks, yeah, so it looks like they turned in their first application on December 16th last year and then they're going through a process and sometime third week of February is their next deadline?
Yeah, they're basically, the state is just determining if it's complete or not.
The DMO would be a more rigorous kind of...
There's additional environmental protections that go into that permit, so they would have water quality testing and different kinds of testing that go into it, but there's still criteria that can be, that should be considered such as public engagement, traffic to and from the mine, environmental conditions, proximity to water, things like that. And those are laid out in that process. And so I think as that public notification begins, those criteria are, we'll have all the resources in the application to look at those criteria.
Okay, thank you. More questions for the town staff? All right, Nicole or Tanya or Chris, any questions? Okay, great. With that, we will go into the BOT reports. And thank you Ty for doing your report, I apologize, it's a new mind. I'll give a quick verbal report. I was not, unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend the Peak to Peak Health and Human Service Alliance meeting a couple Thursdays ago. That timeframe's been hard for me to make happen with my job, sometimes I can, but I think a lot of what they, part of what they did at least was get a download from John, Jonathan Keane about where the town, some things going on with the town. And then I did attend the Rail Jam last weekend, not this past weekend, but the one before that, and it was just really cool to see like a ski town event happening right in our town and Jeff Lynch and crew did a great job putting that together and it was really fun to watch and it was just neat to see an event like that personally, I enjoyed it, my kids enjoyed it. And then I did start a conversation today. I got, my sister forwarded me something from Fraser where my nephew and like lots of kids there are doing internships through the high school. And so I, while I was up at practice today, I talked to the counselor there and I've talked to the principal before, but would like to see maybe us try to start some dialogues and get things going between either the town or businesses in town to work with, because there is an avenue with BVSD to work with them to start creating some internships because I think there could be an interest if we came up with some good options. That's all I have right now.
I've got an update from the NEPA DAC board. So we've had two NEPA DAC meetings, I guess this past, since our last time that we shared trustee reports, I missed one of them because I was sick, but one of them, two major updates, the Business EcoPass program is up and running, so lots of employees in the district have already signed up, which is awesome. Boulder County Department of Transportation is going to continue outreach, but it seems like they have at least 150 employees from Eldora already signed up, which is great news. And then one other update, I think some of you may know that RTD changed up the NB, I think they eliminated two routes through the EcoPass District Funds. We've contracted with VIA to add a route or a route in the afternoon, so that will continue through May when hopefully RTD will reassess.
So is that for like, end of the day for school, high school kids?
That's right. So, something good with the NEPA DAC funds. I think those are the two big updates.
Thanks, Tierney. More verbal reports?
I've got some from ProSAB. So, one of the things that ProSAB has wanted to do is to make some formal recommendations to the BOT. So, at that last meeting, we didn't have Nikki or John and so we weren't able to kind of put together the formal process for that, but look for some formal recommendations from ProSAB soon about sort of strategic goals for 2025 and some of the core recommendations that ProSAB is going to be seeking, particularly around land acquisition and trail connections. So that's kind of the main thing. And there's probably a little bit of like easement and zoning stuff as well as far as getting some connections for, especially the safer routes to school stuff, so. That is the main stuff from ProSAB.
Thanks Luke.
This is Tanya. With the NDDA report, the last meeting, we basically discussed the RFP for the Wayfinding Committee's proposal and narrowed it down to a few people to interview. And then we chose the formerly known as Time Served Group to continue with the summer concert series, it was a very tough decision, had two qualified people, really difficult choice, but ended up going with the same company that ran it last summer. That was the basic gist of the meeting. We discussed trying to figure out how to get Kate some part-time help and better job description made, that's something we need to work on, that's it.
Thanks Tanya, I was at, I attended that meeting, it was really productive and that was a hard decision, you did a good job of it though.
This is Mayor Protem Sterling. Dr. Cog, we did at the beginning of the year a legislative review of some of the bills that are going through legislation and nothing really top of mind to report out on that, but we'll continue to watch it. And Dr. Cog is also going through the process of reassigning committee positions, so we're just kind of doing some administrative things early on. This week, I'll probably pop into the Youth Advisory Board and just see how things are doing with them and then tomorrow night, we have the Planning Commission where we will be reviewing the comprehensive plan.
Thanks Nicole.
I can jump in, this is, it's a little bit of a segue there from Nicole. BZA hasn't met, Boulder County Consortium of Cities hasn't met, but then the latter will be meeting early February to do a legislative overview of bills of note for cities in the county in particular, so I'll be attending that on I believe the 12th and can report back and I'll finally have something to report at one of these meetings at the next one.
Thanks Chris, appreciate it. Thanks everyone, and with that, we can go into our first information item of the evening, the Nederland Car Share Program ending. And Cass, is that right, will be presenting?
Yes, yeah. Hi everyone, so I'm just going to talk a bit about the car share program. The program is set to end at the end of this month, January, and we have chosen not to renew it due to the cost and the low usage. In the AIM, I included a chart of basically the last quarter's use of the car share and they're very low numbers, only four times in November, two times in December, and no reservations in October. So we talked about this with the Sustainability Advisory Board as well and they recommended to discontinue the program and advertise other transportation programs and focus on coming up with, you know, a different, a different option, so pushing the EcoPasses, the Mountain Ride Shuttle, and potentially the upcoming county's Mobility For All Mountain Driver Program.
Thanks Cass. Anything else to add or any clarifying questions for Cass?
Well, I guess, I just have a question as to, why do you think nobody used the car? Seems like a great idea. Just do people even know about it?
Yes, that's a good question and I, since I haven't been around the entire time the car has been here, I don't know that I have the full picture, but from what I've heard, it is too expensive for some people and then maybe like not too expensive for people who already have cars and just choose to use their own cars instead of a car share.
Cass, correct me if I'm wrong, aren't there only like two people signed up for it?
Um, I'm not actually sure how many people are signed up for it, I, yeah, I don't have access to that information, but I did use it and it was kind of difficult for me personally to use.
One of the challenges we've heard is that it's very difficult to sign up to use it. Once you're in, it's okay, but it just takes a lot to get to that point.
Yep, that's what I've heard too.
This is Macy. I've worked with some international students at Eldora to try to get them signed up. They don't have transportation here, but you need to have like a United States identification of some sort, so these international students who are living here are unable to use the program.
Any questions for Cass? Many regrets for not signing up for that. Yeah, I kept meaning to, Tom told me it was a great idea, but I never got around to it, so.
What was the cost?
Yeah, I didn't realize there was a high cost.
I thought it was free, yeah.
Well, so for right now, it's free and then it's going to turn it, because it was like a, kind of a demo program, am I correct there?
Yeah, they asked us to spend, or to pay $10,000 to keep it in town.
Yeah.
And that was the big problem. And then I want to say that a trip to Boulder is around $20, like round trip on it, that could be a little bit wrong, we do get credits at times, but it was, it was not a very, it wasn't cheap.
No, okay, yeah, makes sense to give it up for sure, $10,000 is too much, thank you.
Thanks Tanya. Well, thanks Cass.
Yeah, thank you.
That's the first time we've met you, or at least I have, at least, so thanks for being here.
Yep, no problem.
With that, we'll go ahead to our next formative, informative item, which is the water wastewater rate study presentation.
Mayor and trustees, we have a little problem, our presenter was coming in person and we're not able to reach him right now, so we're not sure if, he may have run into some issue in the canyon or something like that.
We can just shuffle things around.
If that would be okay, just to, okay, thank you.
Of course, no problem. Cool, with that one, then we'll just put a pin in that for now and move on to our action items. Our first action item of the evening is the Natural Medicine Moratorium.
And Attorney Madsen, can you give us the legal description of natural medicine before we start?
Yes, definitely, Jennifer Madsen, Town Attorney. And what this ordinance is doing is really putting a place, a pause on allowing people who are obtaining a license under Colorado's natural medicine regulatory regime to begin operating in the town of Nederland. And natural medicine is defined in Colorado, it's under 12, CRS Section 1217-10412A, and it's defined to be psilocybin and psilocin specifically. Those are the only drugs that are included in the definition of natural medicine. And just to give you a brief background on this, in 2022, voters approved the Natural Medicine Health Act, that was through a statewide ballot measure, Proposition 122. And what that Natural Medicine Health Act did was it decriminalized a personal use possession and growth of natural medicines, psilocybin and psilocin, for individuals over the age of 21, and it also established a regulatory framework for the use of these substances in a therapeutic setting. It created a licensed healing center where natural medicines can be administered under the supervision. where natural medicines can be administered under the supervision of trained facilitators. Also, it created other license types to develop and cultivate these natural medicine products. Colorado is only the second state to regulate natural medicine and to get involved in this in this area. In November of 2020, Oregon voters passed a ballot measure, and Oregon was the first state to create this regulated market for psilocybin products. After the ballot measure passed, the state had to act quickly to put regulations in place for these different licenses. And in essentially, these regulations were put into effect in the summer of 2024. So we're really acting kind of quickly here in terms of taking next steps for local government's role. Local government role is that local governments cannot prohibit natural medicine services within its boundaries as long as a provider is licensed under state law. But local government does have some authority in terms of time, place, and manner restrictions. The state currently has restrictions from designation of these facilities from 100, 1,000 feet from schools and other uses similar to schools. So what local government can do is is put in place regulations that determine where these uses can operate, where they can be placed in town boundaries. You can also put in place a separate licensing regime if you want. So right now, because this is so new, it's really very developing, and town staff and myself would like to see a little bit what other municipalities are doing in this vein and and where they're determining our appropriate locations for these uses. We decided that it would be good to come to you with a recommendation to put in place a moratorium. It's a preemptive moratorium on people operating these uses within the town until such time as we have an opportunity to more closely study these uses and determine where where in town they would be appropriate and reasonable. There was a Denver Post article that was published today. Denver Post had really great timing to put this out today, but essentially, only four people in the whole state of Colorado have applied for a facilitator's license. And essentially, the facilitator's license, the facilitator is a person who administers a natural medicine product to their patient. So only four people have applied for those licenses. Those four people are in the metro area. And there are, I believe, about 25 people who have applied for the other license types. But the state really doesn't think that these these licensees will be up and running until April because you have to grow the product, you have to put it into a product form, and then there's product testing, all before it can go to a facilitator to use to administer the natural medicine. One other thing that's very important to note is you cannot sell this, the natural medicine psilocybin. So when somebody is is getting the use of it, they do have to go to a facilitator and they have to get the use within that person's office. So it has to be under a treatment scenario. It's not like marijuana where you can go to a store and purchase the marijuana. People can also grow psilocybin in their house and use it, use the psilocybin that they grow. So the moratorium is putting in place a halt on these natural medicine uses. The way it's drafted is through December of this year. You always have an option, once these regulations are put in place, to lift a moratorium. So if you if you put regulations together in a quicker fashion, we can all, in that same ordinance, we can lift the moratorium. Happy to answer questions.
And the Planning Commission gave us the recommendation
They did recommend, yes.
To adopt?
Yes, correct.
I have a question. So basically, we're talking about facilities where a licensed facilitator therapist of sorts has somebody do the medication.
Yeah, it's
It's not, there's no dispensaries or anything like that. It's like an office where a person facilitates the experience in a therapeutic session. And there's only four people in the state who have that license right now?
That have applied for the license, yes, because the licensing process just opened December 31st.
Gotcha. And the question about the facilities, do they, are they required to stay with the person until the effects of the drug have worn off? Or is it?
Yeah, they're very regulated. I don't know the, all of the details.
Know that. I mean, are they, are they just one hour and then the people are out? Or do they stay with them until the drug has worn off? Like, what is
I'd have to be, I'd have to research that, so.
Okay. That seems really important for me to make a decision. Also curious, since this is basically not a dispensary and just basically a therapist sort of office where, I'm not sure why this is brought to us, is kind of like almost an emergency since we didn't have a discussion before it became an action item, which is really unusual for moratoriums, my experience. I don't think we've done one without a discussion prior. What, why the urgency right now?
Well, that's, that's typically what you do with a moratorium, is that you put it in place as an emergency because you are stopping the the processing of any applications or stopping uses. So the idea is to stop it on a date certain when the board makes the decision, rather than wait the 30 days for the effective date.
Okay. Well, I think I'm clear. So we're just talking about a facility where a therapist, licensed therapist in this practice oversees the experience. I'm wondering, the natural medicine, that won't inhibit other people from using natural medicine. As I know it, could be herbs, could be all kinds of other different applications for natural medicines. Very broad. I realize you're using the state's definition, but has, I don't understand why they're calling it natural medicine when natural medicine is so broad and can encompass multiple modalities. I'm just, is there any way to specify in our ordinance that it just
We do. The ordinance specifies that in it is Section 3 of the ordinance, that it's the adoption of of definition of natural medicine from this statute. The statute's listed in in the ordinance.
Okay, that's, that's it for my questions. Thank you.
So when they wrote Prop 122, they they made a definition of natural medicine and tied it to just those two
Correct.
Substances?
Yeah. I don't know, maybe, I don't, I don't know why natural medicine was selected as the term.
But to be clear, like, we wouldn't be putting moratorium on anything but those.
Yes, that is clear.
So any other natural medicine would not be be touched or affected or in any way compromised?
Yeah, yeah. And the ordinance really spells out that this is in place because of the Natural Medicine Act. It's, so it's the genesis of the moratorium is laid out in the ordinance.
Thank you.
More clarifying questions?
This would, this would only apply to users or businesses that would normally be required to apply for this license, right? Like, this isn't applicable to other users of natural medicines.
Well, it's going to be anybody who is required to get a license in the state. Yeah. So the way that this works is it's
Only for people who would normally apply for a license.
Right. Yeah, right. We are not, we're not criminalizing it. It's, it's just specifically these licenses that people get through the state. And we want to put in place, the town would want to put in place its own regulations related to where these uses can operate.
But we're not, we're not, this moratorium wouldn't affect cultivation, would it?
Individual, personal cultivation, no.
It would not, individual, personal cultivation would not be affected in any way by this.
Correct.
Okay, I needed to make that statement loud.
And you mentioned that the Planning Commission recommended this moratorium. Have they put this on as something that they're going, or have they, you know, scheduled this for a analysis or discussion on their side yet? Or is that just something that's going to happen?
They, it's not on the schedule because they're kind of waiting on the, this legal framework has been what the question was. But I think that what we can anticipate is this would happen as soon as that happens. You know, maybe this, by the summer, we'd have those conversations going. I think it should be a relatively simple conversation. It's really about just the use tables and everything, so.
Okay, thanks.
And a license to to operate a facility like this goes through the state. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct. Yes, the the facilitators are, have, heavily regulated. They have to get the license through the state. I do want to correct one thing, and that's my understanding is that a facilitator to administer the nat, the natural medicine psilocybin does not have to be a licensed therapist.
Got it. And then, can people still apply for a license to the state? Even if they're, they're hoping that eventually they would open a facility here? Or they would, they, like, can they still move forward with applying for the license?
Absolutely. I mean, I would encourage people to do that. You know, one question for Town Administrator Kane is whether he's been approached by anybody or whether he knows of anybody who is interested in this use in town and
That, that hasn't happened yet.
I think that that is something for the public. If if anyone's interested, definitely tell Town Administrator Kane so that we can know and we can take that into consideration as we're developing regulations or discussing them.
That's a great point to make, that it doesn't necessarily have to stop someone from their process. So is that, I mean, is that really the how this, you know, theorized will work down the road? Is like, you know, do you apply to the state, but you're applying to the municipality or the specific location and jurisdiction as well?
It, it can be somewhat similar to a liquor license because a liquor licensee gets a license from the state and also a license from the municipality. What hasn't been decided is if Netherland wants to have a licensing regime, or if you just want to handle it the way that Town Administrator Kane talked about it, and that is in defining where these uses are located through the use table. It could be, it could be used by right in in your use table.
Right. And that's, that's some of the things that the town staff and Planning Commission will dig into.
Absolutely, yes.
And then I, I apologize if I, no, I did. So I'm not totally in the, in the, in this, in the know. But so personal cultivation, you know, isn't, isn't affected by this at all. But is there, is there like a licensure being just figured out for like, you know, not personal, but like, you know, business cultivation? Or is that?
Yes, absolutely. That's one of the uses where a license needs to be obtained from the state is a cultivation license.
Okay. And is that one of the things that would fall under this moratorium? Or is this just
Yes, it would fall under this moratorium, but that's a business license to cultivate the product and then sell that, like a wholesaler to a product manufacturer to put it in a, in a product form for use.
Okay, okay. So really, it's, it's really, the moratorium affects commercial operations regarding these two natural medicines? Are there more?
I'm confused. You're saying commercial operations. I thought we're only talking about like facilities where people use the drug, like a therapist, doctor's setting, like a doctor's visit. Is that what you mean by commercial? Hello?
I don't think you're on.
Okay, so I'm sorry. I was, can you hear me now, Trustee Corvall?
Oh, yeah, now I can. Could you guys hear my question? I
Yes, we did. We did.
When Billy said commercial, it threw me off. But you're just saying because a doctor's office is a commercial business.
I guess, no, I had asked that because I was kind of needing to clarify that in my own head. Because a healing center is one thing, it's kind of like the place of, you know, use.
That's all it is.
But then I was wondering, what about commercial cultivation? And it sounds like that falls, they, basically, the people who would grow on the, you know, on a more, you know, licensed way and then, you know, sell.
And the growers can really only sell to the facilitators and the, and the people who make the product. The growers cannot sell to individuals.
The commercial growers.
Right.
But not the, the private growers, this isn't going to touch.
But they can't sell the product.
Right. Right, yeah, that makes sense. Does that make sense, Tanya or?
Yeah, that's how I was picturing it. I imagine if this ever went to furtation, the probably the facilitator would have an arrangement with somebody who grew it, I'm sure. So they would have a, a say in their source, I would, I would assume. It's all assumptions. But yeah, I'm not worried about it at all in general as a thing. I'm also not sure why we couldn't have had a discussion item prior to this, where we just went over the use table and kind of came up with where we thought it would be appropriate to have a doctor's office. Just, you know, I, I don't know why this is such an emergency or such a difficult thing to talk about, that it needs a moratorium. I don't think it's complicated at all. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thanks, Justice Corvall. Appreciate it. More clarifying questions or comments before we go to public comment? All right. Hearing none. Actually, real quick. Mayor Protem Sterling, Trustee Larson, any, any clarifying questions or comments?
No.
Nope, already asked one.
Okay, cool. Thank you. All right. With that, we will go to public comment. Anyone, actually, in the room first, anyone in the room have any public comments on this? Okay. Thank you. And with that, we'll go online. Anyone online have any public comments on the, on this action item about a natural medicine moratorium, emergency moratorium? Doesn't look like anyone's razor hand. I can't hear anyone talking. So with that, we can bring it back to the board for further discussion and emotion.
This is Mayor Protem Sterling. You know, I personally don't have any issues with putting the ordinance in place. You know, I personally don't have any issues with putting the ordinance in place, just so for us to be able to do a little bit more research on it. It seems like a fine request, just to make sure that we're doing it correctly, and so that we can take it back to the Planning Commission and they can debate it further.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Sterling.
Mayor, can I make just another comment to support the, you know, our thinking for bringing this ordinance to you? And that is that town is working on developing and adopting a comprehensive plan, and so the idea was to be a little bit more thoughtful in putting in place regulations in conjunction with the comprehensive plan and making, maybe changes that are being made to Chapter 16 because of the comprehensive plan. And so that's an additional reason for taking more time to study it and to be thoughtful about, in conjunction with that comprehensive plan.
So, yeah, for the folks who have the packet, on page 95 in the middle there, "Recommendation Moratorium of Natural Medicine Use." In the middle, about third away in a paragraph, it talks about the comp plan and the intent is to implement zoning code changes based on the adopted comprehensive plan process. A moratorium will allow for consideration reasonable appropriate locations for the natural medicine uses in conjunction with these code amendments.
I will also add that our conversations on the Planning Commission were not against this idea whatsoever. It was more about just being thoughtful, you know, as Attorney Matt said, in terms of where these go, where the businesses go, and just some of the protocols around it. If anything, there was, you know, just some support, there was support for this idea, it's just we want to be thoughtful about how we go about it.
That makes a lot of sense, yeah. And thanks for giving us a sense of what the tone was like when they talked about it. I'd like to hear from everyone just what you're thinking.
I would agree with Mayor Protem Sterling. Seems reasonable to put a moratorium in place and allow for more research and to create regulations that make sense and aren't consistent with the comp plan.
I agree as well.
I agree as well.
Yeah, I think, you know, trusting the recommendation of town staff and our Planning Commission is good judgment in this situation.
Trustee Corvallon?
Well, I think I'm the only one that doesn't agree that thinks this needs to be a moratorium. I really don't, I think people are overthinking it a lot, and I certainly would just put it in commercial zoning and that's that. I just don't even think this has to be a conversation, to be honest, so I'm a no on the moratorium.
Okay, thanks, Trustee Corvallon. So, yeah, I mean, just to be, you know, a couple of points. One is, yeah, my experience so far as mayor is, moratoriums really do come as action. I mean, part of me thought that too, why haven't we discussed this more? But emergency moratoriums generally aren't discussed, they come in short notice, and hence the word "emergency," and that does put urgency around it that maybe seems out of place and silly, or even just doesn't make sense, but it's more about time than, you know, stress, or whatever, or like, it's more about time than emergency, to be honest. So I think a lot of what would be considered with the comp plan, you know, in reading the article also that came out, never posted, it was, you know, it's like distances from schools, which is a big thing, you know, for lots of these new facilities, well, I mean, even liquor stores, I think. So, I, yeah, I see no harm, and generally, yeah, I mean, I'm all for this, I think it serves a good purpose for many people, and I see no harm in just us doing this right. And once we have the regulations in place, then we can lift the moratorium. Right now, it would stand for just under 12 months, but that doesn't mean we have to, it has to take that long, and I think the Planning Commission will delve into it and give us good guidance with the comp plan. Tommy, yes?
I move to approve Ordinance 871 imposing a temporary suspension on natural medicine use in healing center facilities to allow for steady review and regulation development declaring an emergency and providing an immediate effective date.
Second.
Second.
Thanks, I hear a motion and second. Any more discussion? Macy?
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Ty?
Yes.
Trustee Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sterling?
Yes.
Trustee Maris?
Yes.
And Trustee Corvallon?
No.
Thanks, everyone. The motion passes, and I did just want to reiterate, this does not in any way infringe upon or affect or relate to personal cultivation and use. Thanks, everybody. With that, John, would you like us to go to this information item, no?
Yeah, we can do that.
Actually, you know what? I would like to do, Andrew, you must be Andrew, you do water for the town, so your name must be Andrew, because everyone that does water for our town's names is Andrew. All right, are you good if we do something else first? Cool, I just think there's a timing thing with Trustee Sterling, with Mayor Protem Sterling, so I would actually like to do the second action item next. Does that work for you? I mean, I'm not stuck on it, but I think it might be helpful. Great, so with that, we would like to go into establishing a mountain recreation enterprise fund, and I think, John, Johnson?
That's me. Well, Mayor and trustees, before you this evening is an action item for consideration of emergency ordinance 873 establishing a mountain recreation enterprise fund. This ordinance would create an enterprise fund dedicated to ski recreation. This is part of the Town of Netherlands' efforts to explore and manage operations related to ski recreation, including initiatives tied to the proposed purchase and operation of Eldora Ski Area. The establishment of this fund aligns with the town's strategic goals of enhancing economic resiliency, preserving community assets, and fostering environmental and social sustainability. One thing that I want to talk about a little bit is what exactly an enterprise fund is, and essentially what that is, is a government-run account that operates like a private business. In general, revenues generated by the specific services that it creates are used to pay for those services. These are very common in places that generate user fees, which is typically like a water or sewer account, a golf course, or other recreational facilities. Under the Taxpayer Bill of Rights, enterprise funds provide municipalities with a flexible mechanism to manage revenues and expenses without impacting general fund budgets. Really, what this means is that something like a recreational facility doesn't need to use taxpayer dollars to be funded. Netherlands' exploration of purchasing Eldora Ski Area builds on our commitment to community and environmental sustainability, as outlined in previous discussions that we have had. The mountain is not only an economic driver in our region, but it's also a critical part of our identity. By establishing this enterprise fund, we ensure a framework for making sure that the ski area is a self-sustaining entity should this acquisition occur, that we are able to utilize revenue bonds to finance the purchase, protecting the general fund and taxpayer dollars, and it gives us a mechanism to allow excess revenues under Tabor to support other town initiatives. If we do not acquire the ski area, this ordinance can be repealed, and the fund would be retired and serve no other purpose. The proposed uses of the enterprise fund are as follows. The first would be to manage revenue. It would collect and allocate revenue from ski recreation activities, grants, and other funding. It would allow us to do feasibility studies and planning, supporting studies, assessments, and public engagement. It would cover the operating costs associated with the maintenance, administration, and acquisition efforts. It would allow us to fund improvements and partnerships in the future to enhance ski recreation opportunities while maintaining alignment with our community values. And then, like I said, it would allow us to use excess revenues under Tabor to benefit other town initiatives. The financial impact of this, of creating this fund tonight, doesn't have any immediate impact on any other funds of the town. Revenue from the town will be solely sourced from designated fees, grants, and other ski recreation-related income. If we do acquire Eldora, operational revenue will fund its management costs and other capital improvement expenses, meaning that fees from the mountain will pay for the mountain, not taxpayer dollars. There is the possibility that there could be surplus revenue, and there are Tabor provisions that would allow that revenue to be redirected to other town priorities, meaning into the general fund or other funds of the town. This approach ensures financial transparencies, it protects taxpayers from undue financial risk, and it also protects the operations of the mountain to ensure it can continue running in a sustainable fashion. In terms of legal and procedural considerations, an emergency ordinance is required to expedite the establishment of this fund just because of the opportunity that is before us. Per Colorado law, emergency ordinance requires approval of thirty-four of the members of the Board of Trustees, and it takes place immediately. If the acquisition of Eldora does not proceed, this ordinance would be repealed and the enterprise fund would be retired, ensuring that it does not do anything other than this intended scope. I included recommendate motion language in your packet. I am available to answer any questions you might have about this ordinance.
Thanks, John. Any clarifying questions for John?
What happens if we get started on this project and we end up with some money in that fund helping to pay for the, you know, ramp-up situation, and then we, it doesn't close?
That is a good question. I think that in large part, the enterprise fund would be funded at acquisition if we did take revenue bonds or something like that for the whole purchase. There is ways to reimburse costs that are taken, some of the costs that are taken that we would have as we kind of move through a diligence phase if that were, if that were necessary. And so I think that that would be the structure, is that the fund would be funded upon the receiving of those bonds, at which time we would be under contract to purchase, essentially. So I think, I know that doesn't totally answer your question, I don't think we would have funds in there until the purchase occurred.
I was just wondering, like, you know, if, you know, like you said, like, we go under contract, but then, like, we don't actually close, you know, whatever the final, final, final step is there?
We would probably, in that case, we would probably, the enterprise fund has certain obligations that it's allowed to pay for. We would probably pay for whatever obligations we needed to, and then, in the case that there was excess revenue, that is something, like I said, there's methods to transfer funds out of an enterprise fund, but you cannot go, like, from the general fund to the enterprise fund.
Right, so we would never end up in a situation where there was debts against that fund that the town would be responsible for?
The general fund is totally insulated. That's one of the benefits of this, is that the, there's two kinds of government bonds, typically, a revenue bond, which is specifically tied to the user fees of an enterprise, and then there's a general obligation bond, which is the town would be responsible for out of its general money. So this would basically, what it would do is say that only the revenues of Eldora can pay for the operation of Eldora.
And so, if for some reason there did end up with money in there and the deal fell through, we would, that money would just transfer back to the general fund if-
Yeah, following the payment of obligations from that fund.
Yeah, okay.
If not, we will move to public comment. Any public comment, folks on this enterprise fund, folks in the room? Folks online, any public comments? Specifically on the enterprise fund establishment? Okay, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion and a motion.
This is Mayor Protem Sterling. You know, this just keeps us moving forward, and as, you know, Town Administrator Kane has noted, if we don't end up moving forward, it says we can revoke it. So this is just for me, procedure, so let's get it done.
Agreed, it's kind of, it's an important step that we need to take, and if things don't come to pass, then, yeah, we just, we just end it, there's no real loss. Any other discussion or a motion?
I move to approve the emergency ordinance establishing an enterprise fund for ski recreation as presented, to support the town's strategic efforts regarding the potential acquisition and operation of the Eldora Ski Area.
Second. Macy?
Trustee Larson?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Maris?
Yes.
Trustee Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sterling?
Yes.
Trustee Corvallon?
Yes.
And Mayor Billy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone, I appreciate that. And I'm going to make one more change, I talked to Andrew Ream with Raftellus, we're going to move the third action item to right now, and then, and then we'll do the information item last. So this is the resolution of appreciation for Barb Hart. John?
Mayor and trustees, the other night, I was sitting by Barb here at the Downtown Development Authority meeting when she was, turned in her resignation from the organization, and at the time, I was struck by how much she's done for our community. I've known Barb since I worked in Gilpin County, like, several years ago now, and that's only a small portion of the time that she's spent working in our community, like, the last 10 years. So I'd like to read this resolution that we wrote in support of her and in her appreciation, and it says, "A resolution of appreciation for Barb Hart in recognition of her outstanding service and dedication to the Netherlands and Peak-to-Peak community. Whereas Barb Hart has been a vital member of Netherlands-Peak-to-Peak community since 1986, dedicating 38 years of unwavering commitment, selflessly giving her time, energy, and expertise to countless endeavors that have enriched the lives of residents, strengthened local businesses, and fostered a deep sense of connection and belonging. And whereas Barb has served with distinction on the Netherlands Downtown Development Authority Board for six years, most recently as vice chair, where her leadership and dedication helped foster a stronger, more inclusive, and connected business community. And whereas Barb's contributions extend to her tireless work at the Mountaineer, beginning in 2006 and continuing through her ownership from 2007 to 2023, where she preserved and celebrated the voices and stories of the Peak-to-Peak region, earning recognition such as the Colorado Press Association Innovation Award in 2017. And whereas Barb's volunteerism has been extraordinary, from her leadership in the Peak-to-Peak Healthy Communities Project and its many beloved programs, to her service with the Netherlands Area Historical Society, Netherlands Area Seniors, Panther Parents, and Friends of Netherlands, demonstrating her commitment to people of all ages. And whereas Barb has further contributed to the community as co-owner of Brightwood Music since 2010, and through her support of numerous events, projects, and initiatives that have brought joy and connection to the Peak-to-Peak region. And whereas Barb's unwavering dedication, compassion, and belief in the power of community serve as a shining example of leadership, inspiring all who know her. And whereas the Board of Trustees recognizes that Barb Hart has created a legacy of service, connection, and care that will continue to benefit the Town of Netherlands for generations. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Town of Netherlands, Colorado, that the Town of Netherlands hereby expresses its deepest gratitude to Barb Hart for her extraordinary service and dedication. Barb exemplifies the values of our community, and we are proud to honor her immeasurable contributions with this resolution of appreciation. Barb, your love for this community and your belief in its people have strengthened our shared home in ways words can scarcely express. We thank you from the bottom of our hearts." Chris Kelly helped me write this, and he's here this evening as well, and I just wanted to present this resolution to you for consideration of adoption.
Thank you, Jonathan. Thanks, Barb. Any clarifying questions for Jonathan? Thank you, Jonathan. Thanks, Barb. Any clarifying questions for Jonathan? Any clarifying questions? If not, we'll go to public comment. Any public comment here in the room first? And if not, we'll go online?
Great job, Barbara, you've done a lot, thanks.
Thanks, Brent, appreciate it. Well, that will bring it back to the board for discussion and a motion.
I move to approve Resolution 2025-05, a resolution of appreciation for Barb Hart in recognition of her outstanding service and dedication to the town of Netherland and the Peak-to-Peak community.
Second.
I just want to add, as a final note, you know, that having seen a lot of what Barb has done for the community over the years, it's really, this is a big thanks, so we deeply appreciate it.
Yeah, I want to add too, Barb is one of those people who's been around and so involved in so many of the projects, and so many of the things that kept this town going, particularly during, you know, the COVID years, where we were really trying to keep the businesses alive. Really appreciative of all she's done and her endurance for working with the town and keeping, keeping involved for as long as she has.
Yeah, I would say, Barb, thanks for, it's been great to get, getting to know you, and all the advice and just conversations we've had, and just getting your perspective on the community, the greater community, as well as the town, and appreciate all the work you do, and all the great news that comes out of the Mountaineer, and the great music that comes out of Brightwood.
Yep, thank you.
So we got a motion and a second?
Trustee Ty?
Yes.
Trustee Maris?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Billy?
Yes.
Trustee Corvallon?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Sterling?
Yes.
Thanks, everyone, the motion passes.
We'll be printing this on fancy paper and framing it, and I'll bring it to you, a copy.
Mayor Billy, I'm going to drop off now for the rest of the meeting.
Thanks, Mayor Pro Tem Sterling, appreciate it, and with this, we'll go on to our information Well, thanks, Andrew. Specifically, this information item is regarding our water, wastewater treatment study, and Andrew Ream, right? Am I seeing you right?
Yes.
Go for it.
Thanks, everyone. The presentation gets loaded. As was referenced, this is a result of a water and sewer financial plan, plant investment fee and rate study. Mr. Bliss is handing out a few slides that were added before, after the packet went out, so this is to augment the slides with the reference within the packet, that there would be a few examples provided today. So that's more towards the tail end of the presentation, but the update is around the findings of the water and sewer financial plan evaluation, recommendations for water and sewer rate revenue adjustments, as well as our plant investment fee recommendations. And we close on one of the scope items, which was to look into, and look into modifying a assessment schedule for residential customers that, you know, within the industry, kind of goes beyond water meter size and provides a more scalable type of approach. So those are the agenda items for today. Next slide, please. This picks up the objectives that, you know, are twofold. One of them is around the water and sewer utilities themselves as a whole, where we're looking out roughly ten years, and, you know, looking to ensure that we have sufficient funds to meet the, you know, objectives, requirements of the fund, fund the requirements, meet a couple other financial thresholds, I'll review in a couple of slides. And the second area was to update the one-time plant investment fees that are paid by new development connecting to the system, as well as, you know, start looking at potentially modifying the assessment approach for those customers to, for residential, to move beyond meter size. Next slide, I'm going to just do a little bit of an overview, I know I was here a few months ago, and for those paying very close attention, this will be a refresh, a review, but I know a lot of things have happened since then, so just going to kind of touch on the overall process. Next slide, please, as well as some of the criteria that we look at ultimately in answering the question, do we have enough money with our current user charges and rates, or when and why may we need to increase them? So, starting with the planning process, this is just a graphic that depicts what we had done, and we've got, you know, baseline information, budgets, multi-year capital plans, you know, things like the existing customer base and revenues. And we apply them, and it can be a bit of an iterative process, as it was here, where the initial timing of the capital improvements, we revised, we prioritized, and ultimately, you know, if resources weren't limited, we may do things in a little different order, or, you know, maybe tackle some of those capital improvements a little bit differently. And one of the other variables that came up is the pace of growth. If Netherland continues to grow as we have in the last few years, we're not needing to do as much in terms of water and sewer capital improvements, but if we get a couple of the big developments that may come in, that could change some things. And rather than anticipate growth happening in the near term, and the capital plan around it, ultimately where we landed was a little more conservative growth posture, but as a result, the capacity in the treatment plant, for example, the wastewater treatment plant, is sufficient over this ten-year period. So I just wanted to highlight, we went through multiple alternatives, and what I'm presenting later is the recommended plan, kind of where we land, given some of the resource constraints is also, as well as syncing the growth assumptions with the capacity constraints that we may have, and when that may lead in the future to some expansions. Next slide, please. So there's some information here, but ultimately, when we evaluate utility rates and fees, we're looking to accomplish three goals. The first and foremost is funding our expenses each and every year, and we look to do not just funding expenses, but meet a minimum cash reserves is one criteria, and the minimum we have is fifty percent of O and M, or a hundred and eighty days of our operation and maintenance expenses. Now, the second financial target is debt service coverage ratio, and this is a part of existing and anticipated loans that the town has entered into, where these revenues are pledged for repayment. And it's just a test where we need to ensure that we have sufficient revenue after we pay our operation and maintenance expenses, and these are the recurring type of expenses, but sufficient revenue, essentially a dollar thirty, in revenue after operation and maintenance expenses, for every dollar we have in debt service, that's our target. The legal requirement is one point one, or a hundred and ten percent, that same dollar ten. So we set that minimum or floor a little bit above what that legal minimum is, if you will, and that one point three generally guides the recommendations in terms of rate adjustments. Next slide, please. So we've talked, and the memo talks, you know, about similar drivers, and, you know, I'm not going to read each one of these, but we had completed a similar study back in 2122, and, you know, the pace of growth and some of these significant potential developments, and if they come in and the timing affects the capital plan, and it also generates one-time plant investment fee revenues. So as things have grown slower, as we look back at the previous study, we didn't add as much capital, but we also didn't bring in as much in terms of those one-time plant investment fee revenues. Overall, and again, you know, kind of as we look back, but also as occurred annually, there's been increases in costs, whether they're personnel costs, materials, supplies, things outside of the town's control, or even the borrowing rates for debt with interest costs. And those of all increase, affecting our future expenditures. And as we go, you know, it's not just, you know, more significant one-time capital, it's ongoing repair and replacement. And, you know, we're promoting conservation and efficient use of a scarce resource. And the last one, and this ends up being important in terms of the multi-year adjustments or recommendations, where we're trying to levelize and do less significant changes in our user charges. So, you know, while we may be able to meet our criteria in a given year, we're looking out a few years and looking out over that multi-year environment, which may affect some of the decisions early on, to reduce the size of a potential decision later. Next slide, please. So I'm going to transition into the water utility, or as we split water and sewer and look at them separately. As I referenced earlier, the capital plan is one of the significant drivers in terms of this results over a multi-year period. As this chart indicates, we're projecting about twelve million dollars in water capital projects over this ten-year period. And there's a couple significant investments that are part of this, as well as, you know, one-time recurring type expenses. So as we break it into these couple periods, the first five years is a little bit heavier than that multi-year period, or the second five years within that period. And just to highlight, and I referenced it, you know, this prioritization, some of the improvements, they haven't gone away, but they've been prioritized beyond this ten-year period. So the similar chart we were looking at back in October had more capital that had been identified, but just as we prioritize things and evaluated things further as a team, this is the, kind of the end result. So what does that mean for water rate revenue adjustments? We're projecting a twenty-five, a five percent increase. And then as we look out in some of the more significant investments that have been identified, there's a need to increase rates at a higher percentage, and we're forecasting through this ten-year period, knowing that we're not necessarily going to adopt rates for this ten-year period, things will be updated, this plan will be updated before we get to 2034. And we're focused a little bit more in the near term, but as I indicated, you know, we levelize, we don't want to have a significant spike out into the future, and also, the customers tend to prefer smaller, more frequent, rather than less frequent and larger adjustments. So what does this mean over this time period? Again, we're projecting over a ten-year period, but typical town customer is, you know, residential customer in this example, that uses about three thousand gallons a month. That bill with a five percent adjustment to the user charges would be forty-six dollars in 2025. And as we're projecting these, in the case of water, the initial adjustments, it translates to four or five dollar a month increase over the initial three or four years, and then we step up the projection, kind of in these middle years, and we see the dollar impact for a typical customer, rounded to the nearest dollar, increases a bit before the slope of those increases flattens out. And, you know, kind of going back to the why, next slide, please. One of the big drivers is the cash reserves and funding our expenses, including depleting reserves that we've generated over time for these, some of these significant needs that have been identified over the ten-year period. And as you can see in this chart, we've got the target of a hundred and eighty days of O and M, and we're drawing to that level, but by about 2030, we're right on target, and we continue on target through 2034. So this is one driver, and the next slide, please. The second one is the debt service coverage requirements, and this shows the projected results in the blue bars against the legal requirement and our target for rate setting that's a little bit higher. And similarly, you know, we're exceeding this measure in the early years, but we're also projecting the need to take on some additional debt. So things kind of come together in 2030, where there's existing debt that is retired in that year, as we're absorbing and taking on some additional debt with higher debt service coverage requirements. So that timing, and then maintaining that, you know, healthy debt service coverage is one of the drivers, working with cash, these two kind of work in conjunction in terms of driving the recommendations for user charge adjustments.
Could you just touch really quickly, what is the big, that big capital investment in 2030?
It's a couple years earlier, yes.
Oh, 2029, sorry.
It's the construction of, the planning and construction of Netherland Reservoir.
And I'm going to switch to sewer, so I, you know, and I certainly can take questions at the end, but just pause before I change the topic a little bit. I'll keep going, and a similar set of information that we just reviewed with the water system for sewer. So to start with the multi-year capital plan, this is, depending on if some additional development shows up and the timing of it, at some point, we could require an expansion of the treatment plant, and within the growth projections that are here, this is beyond the ten-year period. And whether it's in the ten-year period or not, certainly with the size of that investment kind of affects this chart. But as it's beyond our ten-year period that we're evaluating, the multi-year and ten-year CIP for sewer is less significant. This is more recurring, annual repair and replacement, pipelines, other assets, there's some miscellaneous improvements that are identified in a few years, but this is a little bit more steady state when it comes to kind of the significance of the drivers. Cost drivers, inflation, you know, those things have already contributed to it, but just in terms of the kind of significant one-time investments, there's fewer of them for sewer. But as we'll see, we still have some needs and kind of catching up on some of the funding and impacts of inflation in the near term. Next slide, please. So the twenty-five, we're anticipating a five percent, I think it's five, except for the base rate goes up four percent, so just under five. And then projecting, similar to water, around the nine percent, and then tails off towards the end of the study period, where it's more just matching inflationary cost increases that we've identified. Next slide, please. So is a typical, similar typical customer, three thousand gallons, same-size meter, typical residential customer, just with the sewer rates where they are, this is a higher portion of the bill. And so with a rough five percent adjustment, if that's adopted and implemented for twenty-five, we're right around ninety dollars, and then with the percentage increases, it translates, you know, rounding about eight to nine dollars a month increase before it tails off towards the end of the study period. As- increase before it tails off towards the end of the study period, as the more inflationary adjustments come in, and falls more in that $3 to $4 a month increase from the adjustments. Now, as we look at the drivers, kind of a different scale, but similar environment, with the next slide, this is the sewer portion and where we are today in terms of cash against a target of, again, 180 days of O and M. So as we've got some of the capital in the near term, we're drawing that down in conjunction with the revenue adjustments, right to our targeted amount, our minimum in 2028, and staying there. And then as we get into the out years, with the cumulative effects of inflationary adjustments, we're starting to rebuild that reserve a little bit above the target with 3% adjustments being projected in those years. Next slide, please. And this tracks the debt service coverage requirement, target, as well as the results. And one thing to note, we've got some existing debt in the sewer fund that's being retired in 2032. So that's one of the reasons why the number, this result jumps in the last two years. It's a matter of the debt being paid off, and one of the other reasons why our cash balance jumps up a bit as well, as those payments are no longer there. So what does this mean for a typical residential customer, kind of bringing it back to combined and a little bit more of the near term? The same information, starting with 24 rates that were in place in the last year, this typical customer, the water and sewer bill is about $130 a month. And with the rough 5% adjustments, that increases about $6 a month, again, for a typical customer. And with higher adjustments in '26, '27, translates to a higher amount or increase, about 9% at $14 in the first year, and about 16 in the second. Rounding to the nearest dollars, and both of them are going to be a little closer to 15 without the rounding, and showing those accumulating, if you will. So my final topic gets into plant investment fees and a bit of our overview and the assessment options. There's a handful of slides here, but as I'm changing the subject again, I wanted to pause and see if there are any questions on sewer financial plan. Okay. So just a bit, next slide, please, just a bit of an overview. And there's a lot of acronyms for these types of fees. Plant investment fee is one that I use most often. And what this is, is a one-time payment for impacts to the system, for infrastructure that was sized or put in place with new development in mind. It can't be used to pay recurring operation and maintenance expenses, it is intended for capital and debt service. And sometimes, there's different opinions around these types of fees, but it's a contractual agreement, and there's certainly some guidance on the approaches. And that is identified within this slide, but it's a fee for service and intended to reflect the impact on the system of those new connections or new development. In terms of the update, and I had led the previous study where we had recommended and the town had implemented some adjustments or increases to this fee, and we followed a similar approach with updated information, as highlighted here, where ultimately, we're looking at the value of the system and the capacity of that system. And the result of it is the dollar per gallon per day, or per MGD. And then we translate that to the impact of an equivalent residential unit, another one of the abbreviations or acronyms we like to use in this industry. And so between those two, we get a fee per EQR, which one EQR is a 3/4-inch residential So there's some limitations, water systems, we look at the peak day demand, or that's how we design and constrain the system. Where on sewer, it's more about the effluent and the influent that comes into the system, but the discharge from customers. So those end up being the constraints of the system and the constraints in terms of the capacity we have to serve customers. So we completed the update, and the results of a maximum supportable fee continues to be higher than the fees that were implemented and adjusted. So we're proposing an adjustment that matches the rate increases. So what is shown here is the approximate 5% adjustment. And the other thing I'll mention is, and as we talk a little bit about the potential changes on the assessment side, these fees are assessed by water meter size, as laid out and shown in the schedule. And that's still the most predominant, the most common way these fees are assessed. And there's a lot of reasons why meter size makes a lot of sense. But one of its shortcomings is that we have this minimum, and we have customers that, particularly residential customers, that if we had the ability, and we don't, but if we had the ability to have a smaller meter size that would restrict their demands, then we would have a schedule that would pick that up. So this is a case where we've got kind of a bit of a minimum, and some customers that may not be sort of demanding as much, or demanding as much as the average or the typical customer. Similarly, we've got others that are on the other side of it, and that can be served that are above-average demands. And we get these sort of blocks, you get up to 1-inch meter, and that can serve a range of fixtures, and then an inch and a half is required. And you kind of go through these steps, but the fee is flat until you graduate to that next meter size. Next slide, please. So there's been certainly a trend within the industry over a number of years. This first showed up in more resort communities, where a single-family residential, this sort of EQR that I depict, has a much wider range. And it is getting traction and being implemented, not just in where it kind of first saw it in more resort and destination communities, but also front-range communities and this idea of a scalable plant investment fee, or as I coined earlier, described earlier, moving beyond meter size. And this shows a range of options, whether it's commercial or residential, there's a lot of choice, and a lot of these, it gets more granular. The information that we need to assess the fee can get more specific, in some cases, it can be sort of specific for these needs. So there's a lot of balance, especially a community the size of Nederland that doesn't have the same staff as, say, Aurora, or Westminster, Denver, some of these other communities that may have a scalable or similar assessment schedule. So as we kind of narrow this down, and certainly meter size is one of the options, but as we look at more of a scalable plant investment fee assessment, I'm recommending kind of a couple measures of focus. And these have indoor and outdoor, as we're kind of breaking them out. I will mention that, on average, and compared to most of the communities that I work for, the amount of outdoor water use in Nederland is much less significant. So the kind of outdoor component, while there could be a large user we want to be mindful of, I'd say it's less variable than it may be in other communities, where that variation in lot size, or even just the use of water outdoors, is larger. So the kind of the indoor side of things is a little bit more significant. And when you look at a few different options outside of meter size, one of them is bathrooms or bedrooms, or some combination of those. Another option is looking at the finished square feet, or it's a bigger size, it's going to have a bigger impact, smaller size, smaller impact. And the third, which is a bit of a blend, it's driven based on the plumbing fixture units. And this is something that the town kind of goes through this process in order to size the meter. And so this is an example where, on one hand, I can come up with really complicated calculations. And there's a lot of complexity that we can add, we can ask for additional information. If some things change, that can influence the fee. And we want to balance that with the administrative requirements of how specific we want to get. If somebody changes a very small thing, it's going to have a dramatic impact, or even just kind of uncertainty in changing things. So there's a bit of a balance between these. And also, as alluded, there's staffing requirements, there's kind of living with something. So we want to find something that provides a balance that may be a little bit more equitable, more equitable than what we do today by meter size, but also is practical to administer and frankly, live with. So that's a bit of a challenge. And I mentioned blended solution, there can be a couple ways to go about this, particularly with not a significant amount of outdoor requirements, where whether we're looking at fixture units or bathrooms as a round, as a way to scale these fees, and then potentially having kind of a minimum amount of outdoor footprint. And if someone exceeds that, then that could add additional EQR's. So there's some additional kind of really assessment and weighing of options that is still to be done. But to help with this, we came up with hypothetical examples, and I want to be real careful, these are hypothetical examples to kind of illustrate a couple situations. One is the first example, where we've got residential units, in this case, these are multiple units with a single connection, but basically, their footprint, building size, bathrooms, fixtures, is less than a typical Nederland, single-family residential connection. And they're paying, they would be paying, based on the existing schedule, meter size-based fees. The second example is where it's a single residential unit with square feet, bathrooms, and fixtures that are more than a typical residential equivalent. So this gives us kind of two, outside of maybe that average or expected connection or EQR. Next slide, please. So starting with the first example, and in this case, in this illustration, it's three separate units, multi-unit, multi-family connection, with one service connection that's serving all three units. But each individual unit has a square feet of less than 500 square feet, one bathroom, kitchen, and there is laundry, but it's shared amongst the three units. This would be a 1-inch water meter size, so a little bit more than that 3/4-inch for that typical residential customer. And we're going to do the math for a 1-inch meter, and using the 2025 fees, the PIF in this example, a meter size-based approach would translate to about 1,012,000 for the three units, or per unit, that's about 37,500. In an example of a scalable plant investment fee, in this case, where each unit was deemed, again hypothetical, is one-half EQR. And the fee per EQR is that 3/4-inch fee that, for water and sewer, is about $68,000 under the schedule. So in this case, this one, the fee would be, and it would translate to about $101,000 And under the more scalable, where it's a half EQR per unit, it would be roughly $3,400 less per unit. And again, this is a bit of a hypothetical, and there's a bit of savings in this example with the multi-unit connection with the 1-inch meter. If, say, those were individual 3/4-inch connection, we would see more of a difference and more of a scaling. The second example is kind of the other side of the average. In this case, it's one unit with one service connection. And this unit is 4,000 square feet, in this example, four bathrooms, kitchen, laundry, and some additional fixtures affecting its demand. But it's still able to be served with a 3/4-inch connection, and so the plant investment fee would be roughly 68,000 under the schedule that we have today, a little bit under that. And under this illustration, again, it's not, a little bit more than one EQR in this example. So using that schedule, this would translate to, and my math is a little bit off, instead of 2, the 1.6, but a little more than 100,000 under this EQR approach. And this would result in a bit of a higher fee in this example, or this case. But again, it gives an example of a scalable approach, where we've got connections with the same meter size in this case, but more than one EQR, a little bit more than what is anticipated. And the fee scales with that, with that EQR approach. The converse is something that's a little bit smaller, where the ability to recognize ultimately, the impacts on the system in a more incremental, variable-type approach. So just to close on this, and there's certainly some work, some further assessment, and kind of weighing the options, and finding this balance between the complexity, and on one hand, fairness and equity, but also something that is administrable, that we can live with, that doesn't completely change sort of the processes, the development processes that we have today. So there's some steps in 2025 around these few options that I had identified. And then ultimately, EQR definition, if it's focused on one of them, or a bit of a blend of a couple, that would translate into a more scalable assessment option for consideration, potential implementation in 2026. I will say, just briefly, with anything, there's trade-offs. And even with more kind of scalable, there's not going to be, there'll be outliers, there'll be things that kind of fall through the cracks, or maybe a bit of an exception. So I just want to highlight that even as we get more scalable or more equitable, there are always a bit of these trade-offs that we will run into. So that's the final slide I had.
Thanks, Andrew. What questions do we have for Andrew?
That was a lot to take in, thank you. So here's a tough question. Do we have any option other than raising rates? Is there any other, what happens if we don't do that, if we don't raise rates?
So this is similar to the enterprise fund that we created earlier this evening, that all our water and wastewater is run through user fees, essentially. One thing that's interesting about the enterprise funds in Nederland is that they take sales tax dollars as well. And that creates a situation where we need to be very careful about how we take grants for water and sewer purposes and other outside funding sources. Doesn't limit it, but it does mean that it's a more complicated process. We'll always try to get grants as much as humanly possible, and revolve loan funds, which are cheaper dollars that are available to state agencies. But what we're talking about is things like making sure your toilets can flush, because the pipes don't have holes in them, and making sure that water can come into the plant, because we have a place for it to come from, and things like that. And so I think one of the really unfortunate things about this is we run into these capital projects. One thing I'll say is Andrew Bliss has been working really hard with JVA to really determine what projects help the most to protect the plant specifically, and to kind of like work on when we do these capital investments into the system. There's a couple of projects we can do, like a sewer bursting project to make sure there's less infiltration into the plant, which will mean less water comes into the plant, meaning our permit, we stay in our permit limits. And there's a lot of things that he's doing just to manage the plant for that purpose. I think we're going to continue doing that work, but that's what would happen, is we wouldn't have the money to fund the improvements we need to continue running water and sewer.
Right, which sounds like there's no real option to do anything other than raise rates.
Right. The thing to remember, too, is that on these capital projects, if we do achieve a grant for one of them or more of them, if you think back in those earlier slides, there's like about 11 million or so in water projects, another 4- another 4 million or so in sewer projects. If we're able to bring that number down, it would lessen the impact that future increases have. And one of the things we can do is work with Raff Telus again, potentially in a year or two, once we know how those initial projects go. And if we can cut the scale of what the capital investment needs to be from the fees, then that could also lower rates.
Yeah, I did notice in those capital improvement slides that there was a key item for grant-funded, but nothing in the chart for grant-funded.
And the big reason for that is that you don't want to fund, you don't want to, you don't want to build your plan based on something that might happen. And so you want to really think about those user fees. The other thing is that's a distribution across the town. So like as things change, that number might change too. And that's why we want to update these numbers. And I guess, Andrew, is it the best practice to update this every three years? Or how often would you recommend?
Three to five, barring some significant, you know, regulatory, you know, something that materially changes the capital plan. But three to five years is what we see as the best practice.
Out of curiosity, do we know how our rates compare to other, like, small mountain towns?
Yes. So right now, they're higher than some and lower than some. I'll tell you where, you know, where I was most recently in Idaho Springs, they're higher. They just had to build a new plant though, and had several other infrastructure projects. But there are places that haven't adjusted their rates or may have newer systems too, that's a factor. A lot of our stuff is older, and so it's just time to replace it. And that's one of the things that affects our model.
Idaho Springs is higher, you said?
Yeah, a little bit.
Is that for PIF fees too?
I think we're relatively comparable, but I'm not 100% sure exactly what their numbers are.
And, I mean, is that the same for, like, both water and sewer systems, you know, kind of statewide? Or is that, or is our, it seems like our water costs are higher.
Yeah, we have only in our system, there's only about 1,000 users. And that impacts this because, again, on the enterprise fund, fees have to support the service. So it's a distributed, it's a distributed cost for us. Whereas somewhere maybe like in Fraser Valley has like 3,000 or 4,000 homes that that cost can be shared with. Or Ourvada, for instance, has a much bigger system. So that is one of the things that affects us a little bit.
And are we, is, how much of an impact is, like, Big Springs, where getting water and sewer out into those, you know, mendles?
Currently in our capital improvement plan, we kept distribution and collection improvements somewhat general because we're continuing to work with JVA to prioritize projects. I will confirm that Big Springs requires a lot of water distribution work. Water mains are buried too shallow. Water mains were, that were too small were installed. And there's, sewer does need to be extended in Big Springs, but that is not included in our capital improvement plan at this time.
And, I mean, is there like a return on, you know, like you said, the more homes are attached to your system, that, you know, you can distribute the cost more? Like, how do you balance the return on the capital improvement it takes to run water or sewer to new homes?
That's one of the things that we've been talking about a lot. So for instance, if we have a project come before you, and this has happened a couple of times, where like a PIF fee is, is, you know, you give that to the organization or the person, that puts that cost on everybody else, essentially. So like if it's a four-inch line, you really are increasing the cost on the whole system. And so one of the things that Andrew and I have been talking about is can we find grants or other opportunities to help folks fund those PIF fees? Because we still have those, those same problems exist whether they connect to the system or not. And some of the bigger users may really impact us in a way that causes us to have to spend a lot of money. So that's one of the things we've been talking about is how can we help people do that without ourselves, you know, digging into a bigger hole? And I don't know that there's a great answer to that, but I do think this is something that's happening increasingly throughout the state as more, there's more pressure on affordable housing specifically. And I don't know that the legislature is going to adopt or do something about it this year, but I'm, I think there's a lot of people hopeful that they find a way to help support plant investment specifically.
Just to add, add to that, I want to be clear that lack of PIF revenue is a driver in this rate study. We had to cut pretty significantly the projected revenue from PIF fees compared to the last, the last study. So just want to mention that that is a driver here.
And how, I mean, you know, PIFs obviously means new, new built, you know, new development, you know. It seems like currently Netherlands doesn't have like a lot of area where we're looking at new.
No, there was to be, there has been people who have bought PIF fees, bought into the system several years ago. And our code, it's not really designed to do that. And so there has been a question about what happens with undeveloped PIF fees and how we handle that. And Andrew, I don't know if you want to talk about that a little bit more, but we've had some conversations about whether or not we should buy them back if they're undeveloped or how we would handle that in the future. And I think that's another policy question for you guys.
What's that mean? I'm confused by that.
It's almost like people have bought PIF fees years ago, almost as like an investment, where PIFs were much lower and they held on to them with the hopes that they'll be able to develop now with much lower PIFs. John has suggested maybe an ordinance or a code language change that says that, you know, you need to develop within 12 months of purchasing your PIF fee or you need to pay the difference between your original PIF fee and the current PIF when you do development. I think that's the gist of the suggestion.
Yeah, and I think that's a, like I said, a policy question we've got to bring back to the board.
With that retro pack, are you saying you'd buy their?
I think there might be some alternatives, and I think it's been mostly a very high-level conversation to this point. So I think we just need to bring it to you guys.
I have a question. When you said that the PIF fee projections lower than what actually, you lowered your expectations based on reality, and that's because there's no development, low development happening. But don't the high PIF fees in and of themselves contribute to the not, the no development or low development because they're so prohibitive to most developers? Or I guess some have a lot of money, but I've heard from many developers that the PIF fees are difficult. Are there, so it's kind of like a catch-22 because if we lower, if we don't lower the PIF fees or if we keep raising them, we're discouraging development. And without the PIF fees, without the development buying into the PIF fees, then we don't have any real investment money. And so we have to put all that burden on the users by raising rates. So is there some sort of middle ground to encourage incentivized development so that?
And I think Mr. Ream had kind of mentioned that in the presentation, that the actual supportable market rate of a PIF fee is significant. That's, is that correct, Andrew?
It is, and it's higher than where the town is today.
And so we went with like a 5% just inflationary increase. But you're right, there is a vicious circle here, and that's one of the things that we need to solve for. And I think that that's the challenge, is that how do we promote sustainable development without impacting everybody else in the town significantly? And I don't know that we have a good answer for you on that.
What about, and this little bit of a jump in context, but, you know, a project, say like Bobcat Ridge, where, you know, we're looking at annexing into the town a really high-density selection of units, which would both, you know, have, I assume there's going to be, you know, some negotiating on that PIF fee, but that there would be PIF revenue, but then also ongoing, you know, just monthly use bill revenue.
Maybe not, we may not want to speculate about specific developments. But I think like for like something like that, like where there was a development that might come in that had density to it, there's a lot of calculations that would happen. And that would be something they'd do with Andrew and JVA specifically, of looking at what the actual load on the system would be.
Right.
And how it would impact things. And that would be something that you could consider. There's several criteria that would go into annexation and impacts like that are something that could be considered.
Yeah, and that's probably the kind of thing that we would then maybe do a reevaluation of this, this budget, you know, based on the scale of that.
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good example. I believe that development was forecasted. I'm not sure if it was forecasted in the previous rate study. It was forecasted in our previous capital improvement plan, but we've since taken that out of our planning because we're just not sure if that development or other developments like that are going to happen. I just want to mention to your question and Trustee Corvalon's question, that that's where this scalable PIF concept that Andrew Ream discussed came from is to me, and I think to most like water professionals, you want to make sure you have a defensible process and calculation to your PIFs. And a scalable approach may help us lower the floor of our PIFs based on what impacted development has. So it's, there's still a process, there's still a calculation in place. It's not like the town is doing any specific favors for anyone. It's still kind of based on the impacts to the system. But it helps incentivize construction that will have less impact on the water and sewer system.
And I just want to kind of add, and I don't want to leave the impression, I mean, it, the, these types of studies, you know, the master plan and CIP update that preceded, you know, the kind of valuation of the rates and the financial plans, it's very difficult because we're projecting things that haven't happened. And so there may be a developer or development that's, you know, meeting, really excited, you know. We think it's going to happen in this five-to-10-year period. But with utilities, you know, you don't have that, we can't just add a little Lego block that says, oh, we can serve them at the plant, you know, or, you know, just kind of add a piece to a pipeline. So it is difficult, and we've got to anticipate and kind of project. And while, you know, PIFs may have been a factor for, you know, those connections, you know, between the previous study and now, I'll just add, you know, that there were others, you know, costs, cost to build, cost to materials, you know, what, you know, other factors that may have played into that decision. So I don't, you know, want to leave the impression that, you know, it was a forecasted thing, it didn't happen, and it was just because of the PIF. I think that there's multiple, you know, kind of variables that may have influenced that. Even, you know, development communities, optimistic folks, I think you have to be to work in that business. And, you know, and someone might have been, and then something changed, and maybe they didn't go forward with something that they were anticipating. So I just wanted to mention that, that, you know, plant investment fees are a component, but not the only variable.
You had said something earlier about supportive market, like you, so we compare, misunderstood what you said, like something just a little bit ago about supportive market study, or you had looked at other markets? Is that, that's how I heard it, maybe I heard it wrong.
Well, we looked at the maximum supportable fee based on the Netherlands' water and sewer systems, the value of that, or, you know, as we're anticipating the capital plan. And just, you know, that has jumped up from what it was, you know, four or five years ago when we did that previous evaluation. So the calculation for Netherlands based on these facilities went up. And then I'll just kind of mention, you know, there's a pretty wide range. And if we were to look at the town and compare, you know, to different communities, there's going to be certainly some where the similar fees are lower and others where they're quite a bit higher. And one of the variables is, you know, is the community out purchasing water rights, securing water rights, expanding capacity today versus maybe, you know, that was something that was done in years past when those amounts were different. So I mean, that is one variable. If we were to, you know, put up a plant investment fee and look at, you know, with cash-in-lou or, you know, kind of that full amount and compare them, a lot of the ones on the higher side would fall into those that are, you know, either developing or pursuing water resources currently versus those that, you know, made those investments 50, 100 years ago.
That makes sense.
Just some context.
Or what more questions for Andrew?
Here, Billy. Just as a kind of a note of how this would work, is this rate study would be what we'd be building future budgets off of. So you've already kind of gone through the model for 2025, so that's already happened. So these changes wouldn't even be contemplated until 2026 in this model. But that would be something we'd talk about in work session. In the meantime, Andrew has been working with JVA on our water model, which is basically one of our controlling documents for the infrastructure and some other work. And so these things may, you know, they're not, I wouldn't say they're in flux, but there is opportunities to, that things may happen in the intervening time before we start the budget process.
Thanks. That makes sense. More questions or comment? Chris or Tanya, any questions or comment?
No questions, just really appreciate the analysis and the models.
Could I want to add one more thing, Mayor?
Yes.
I just really want to point out, because it's just so much information, I really want to point out that that Netherlands reservoir is by far the largest project in our capital improvement plans. It's been in our capital improvement plans for years. But it, the, in terms of how much in our water rates we put towards that project, it has not been as significant. So this is a suggested change of, that we start putting more money towards that project. And that's really based on, you know, the priority, you know, the board clearly showed that water security is important. And so that's, I just wanted to make that point. Yep.
Thanks, that's a good point. Well, if there's no more questions, thank you. Appreciate your time and all the info.
Thank you.
With that, we will, I think we have gone through our, we have completed our action items and our information items. And we'll take public comment and non-agenda items. And in the room, folks online, public comment and non-agenda items. Other business, real quick, I was at the Colorado Building Symposium, a new building conference that was last week. I met Shana Monzingo, who's really big in the state with code, and found out from her, she's presently working with SafeBill on our new building code, which I didn't know was being worked on presently. Did you know that?
We're hoping that is going to be coming forward in the probably late winter, early spring.
Okay, yeah. I mean, I know it's a process, but it was interesting to learn from her that that's underway, so yeah, okay. 2024, ACC 2024, so it'll be a jump. Any other business? Motions to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Macy?
Mayor Billy?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes, please.
Trustee Corvalon?
Yes.
Trustee Ty?
Yes.
Trustee Maris?
Yes.
And Trustee Larson?
Yes, indeed.
Thank you. The meeting is adjourned at 8:59 PM.
Thanks, everybody.
Have a good night, everyone.
Yeah, you too. Thanks for being here. Hope you feel better.